Hello, everybody. Thank you for joining us. My name is Mark DeSalvo. I'm the elected town moderator. This is, I think, the 16th time that we have sat together in some form to talk about On the Warrant, which is really just an invitation for the community at large to recognize that their legislative government, Town Meeting, which is the legislative body of our community, sits together and makes every judgment around policy, zoning, and bylaw that our community must be guided by. That meeting is Tuesday, May 14th, at the North Andover High School, commencing on time at 6:30, as the folks here know. I'm joined, in a privileged manner, by our town manager, Melissa Rodriguez; to my right, Donovan O'Connell, who's the chair of our Volunteer Finance Committee; the chair of our board of -- excuse me, Select Board. I'm an old man. I keep on falling into these things.
I'm very close to you.
Thank you. Laura Bates; David Brown, who's the chair of the School Committee; and the Acting Superintendent of Schools, Pamela Lathrop. We've had some fraught moments in our community in recent period, and it's important that since the discovery, I guess more accurately placed, of a significant deficit in our school budget, and lots of activity around mitigating that circumstance. I think it's important that we start with the elephant in the room to talk going forward about the effect of that circumstance, and the roles that people have in trying to mitigate and ameliorate the situation as it relates to Town Meeting, its effects both fiscal year '24 and, more importantly, fiscal year '25. Nobody better than the person to my right, Melissa, to frame this issue at this moment in time. Would you please?
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Certainly, it has been a difficult few weeks here in town, and I'm proud of the work we've done together to bridge the recently announced $3.2 million deficit. I want to stress that our fiscal year '24 budget is now under control. We will end the year with balanced books, and I think that is really important as we go into our fiscal year '25 budget season. I want to add that we are working together collaboratively to figure out fiscal year '25. This is not a one-department problem. This is a collaboration, and we'll continue to do that. In the coming weeks, as Town Meeting comes closer, we'll be available with more information. We'll figure out how we're going to bridge the $1.9 million gap going into next year, and we'll make this community proud. I look forward to coming back on North Andover Cam as it gets closer to announce those plans.
Well, I have every confidence that the people, the skilled people over here at this dais, and those people that work with you, will in fact do that. Dave, if we can comment more specifically about what the School Committee is doing at this moment in time.
So, we are bringing in outside help to look at the circumstances that we are under and to make, you know, a good study of it, how we got there, why we got there, and what we can do about it. You know, and immediately, we're looking at what we can do in the 2025 budget to bring it in line, right, to where we can get to the number that we're putting forth at Town Meeting.
Now, there's a consequence on both sides of the government, as we can appreciate. Perhaps, Donovan, your role as chair and member of the Finance Committee is particularly acute in these next weeks in the run-up to Town Meeting. Share with us what you're doing and what you might be recommending, if you know at this moment.
Yeah, sure. So, thanks, Mark. As the Finance Committee is nine members of our community appointed by the town moderator, in this case, you, we are charged with looking at the budget and talking to all of the parties that make up the budget and will be affected by the budget to make a recommendation at Town Meeting to the legislative body. We had done that quite successfully for the fiscal year '25 budget, but, you know, things have changed somewhat, and we're going to need to go back into meetings and deliberations to poke and prod at the budget again, given that there will be changes. So, over the next week to 10 days to maybe two weeks before Town Meeting, we're going to meet again, and we're going to talk to the town manager or the Acting Superintendent at the School Board, and do those deliberations again so that we can make an accurate and objective recommendation at Town Meeting.
So, I did notice in the book, the warrant book, there was a specific report from the Finance Committee, and there's a new prefatory paragraph on that front side. Maybe you can explain what that's all about?
Sure. So, the Finance Committee is required to give a report to the town every year, a certain amount of days. I think it's 21 days before Town Meeting. So, we prepared that report before we knew about the deficit in the FY '24 budget and how that may affect the FY '25 budget. So, while most of that report, almost all of that report, will still be good, there was one section in particular, the schools, that we wanted to redact. So, we put, we wanted to alert folks of that, that some things that we had studied and assumed are, in fact, may change. So, we wanted to make sure that citizens and those, you know, participating in Town Meeting were aware that we knew that only after we made this report. But we still think a lot of good work went into that report, and that most of it is still appropriate and still good.
Thank you for that, Everett.
You're welcome.
Laura, the first that the community truly heard about this was at a Select Board meeting. You might suggest the role that the Select Board has going forward, particularly in preparation for Town Meeting, relative to dealing with this problem of the moment?
Yeah. I think that, you know, working with our town manager, and Lynn Savage, and Kyle, and making sure that we're working collaboratively with the schools.
And Lynn Savage and Kyle are?
They are. Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Our Finance Director and our--
Besides Sterling, both of them.
Yes. Our Finance Director and our new town accountant to work collaboratively with the school department so that we can find that money to cover the deficit, and then, again, to move forward with fiscal year '25 and make sure that we have a balanced budget.
I appreciate that. Now, it's certainly too early to talk about consequences at the moment that we're taping right now, but notwithstanding that, we've heard, Pamela, that there are consequences that will be happening in the school budget. Do you have any notion or any determination that you'd like to share with the public as to the priorities and/or manner in which you hope to be making specific recommendations to the School Committee?
It's a good question. I think that what we would want to preserve first is as many student-facing positions as possible. That will be a priority for us, so that our students, the less impact on our students will be the most important thing. We have a strong leadership team who will put their heads together and look very closely at the way that we're spending and where we can make cuts, things that we can go without, and then ways that we might be able to transfer some of the things that we might be doing to some of the grants that we are receiving and looking that way. But really, one of our main priorities is to limit the effect of student-facing positions.
Much appreciated. So, let's dive into Town Meeting. The largest bit that we do at Town Meeting is establishing policy as a community in our budget. We have a near $130 million budget. Perhaps you can relate to us what's in that budget and what initiatives that may or may not be at risk, but at least were planned going forward in the next fiscal year?
Sure. So, the budget's always a very near and dear to my heart and exciting time for us at town offices.
Talking like a town manager.
It's true. I know. I can't help it. I love it. So, this year, in fact, we were able to make a lot of consolidations and changes. So, while the town budget is really not seeing major increases or a lot of new positions or initiatives, we have done some measures that we think are just going to improve operations. And the most exciting of those really is in our facilities department, which we actually share with the schools. And so, what we did was we went ahead and took all of the electricity from all of the budgets, including the school's budget, put it into that shared services budget. We also took all repair and maintenance budgets as well, and it's difficult, right? So, if you had a large repair, and let's say you're at the library with a small budget, that could really be a huge burden. And the schools were really seeing a lot of uncertainty in their repair budget as well due to the amount of buildings that they have. So, we've created a new facilities department. We've already hired, starting the end of this fiscal year, towards the end of the fiscal year, a assistant director, and using the money that we were using throughout all of these different departments to hire consultants, we're actually hiring an HVAC person, electrician, and a plumber. And so, we think that that's going to give us a much better product. We think we're going to be able to take better care of our schools and our town buildings, and we think we're going to be a lot more efficient moving forward.
So, the workaday obligations of government continue?
Yes.
All right. And that you feel well-prepared and well enough financed going forward in the next fiscal year?
Absolutely.
For that. Any comment that you'd like to make?
Actually, yeah. I would like to say that the Finance Committee was very, very supportive of this move to consolidate the facilities. We think it's going to be a very, very smart moving-forward policy to be able to control the costs a little bit better across the entire town. We think it's going to make a big difference in the budget moving forward, not just in fiscal year '25, but in the outlying years past that. So, we're very, very happy to see this.
So, the school department budget is some $63 million, so recommended at this moment by vote of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, fully half of our total town budget. Where are your goals relative to that school department budget right now?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean in goals.
What are your goals in terms of the use of those funds?
Oh. So, you know, obviously, we want to maintain and improve our performance as a school system. So, the most important thing is making sure that that doesn't change, right, that the educational goals and the learning, that it still goes on. I think, I welcome the change for shared facilities, shared maintenance. That's very, to me, great efficiency. I think will help, certainly. We need to, you know, obviously look at what we can reduce without impacting quality. So, we'll look for other efficiencies in both, well, across the board, actually.
And for you, Pam, how do you measure, you know, on a metric basis, the performance interest that you have, that we're meeting those standards and that the dollars being spent are being well performed?
So, we have lots of different ways that we assess performance within our schools. I mean, there's obviously state testing, which is one of the biggest ways that we look to see if our curriculum is matching what the state is asking us to do, and if our teaching methods are supporting the curriculum, and if our students are performing the way that we would want them to perform. You know, we're always looking at how we're performing within the state of Massachusetts, within other students. We have school-based performance methods that we use. We have some early childhood, all of the middle school, high school. We've been fortunate this year to work on what we call MTSS, which is a multi-system, a multi-tiered system of support. So, we're always looking at what we're providing to all of our students, which is what we call the core of our students, and that what we might need to provide extra for students. And then, maybe those are the very small amount of students that you have to provide something that is separate from or substantially different from what the core piece of work is. But education is all about collecting data, interpreting that data, using the data to inform your instructions. So, it's sort of that circular motion, and those are some of the things that we're doing to make sure that we are performing the way that we have said that we will for the public. I think a lot of our budget obviously goes towards our salaries, but we have done some great work in the last few years in terms of response to things like the science of reading and making sure that we are giving an equitable education to all of our students.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Laura, folks who rightfully choose to be concerned that whatever money is appropriated, that we're going to spend it appropriately. How do you guarantee that as the principal community representative in our town?
So, I think that part of it is reports and reviewing those reports, and Melissa reports to us. Well, I think Lynn, our Finance Director, reports to Melissa, and Melissa reports to us. And I think, moving forward, we're going to work more collaboratively with the school department in reviewing those reports so that we make sure that we're all spending in the same pace that we should be throughout the year, so that we don't really end up in this place again.
Okay. Much appreciated. There are other parts of our budget that exist, including a capital program. Perhaps you can reprise what is on this year's agenda for the capital program?
Sure. So, we are excitedly continuing Facilities Master Plan 2. We're actually doing that both in the operating budget and in the capital budget. So, in the operating budget, there is a salary reserve that's in the town budget, hasn't been transferred over to the schools yet, for the implementation of the middle school teachers, because that building will open next year. So, that's very exciting, and that is using new revenue from Amazon as the TIF comes on. So, we're really excited about that and excited to see the plan just continuing to work. We also have the design for the high school fields. We have the funding for the field at McAvoy. We have the design for the addition and renovation to Fire Station 2. Then, we have some small stuff, like the little things that we need, ambulances, a dump truck, a lot of infrastructure money and money to maintain our buildings. So, there's about 27 projects. Originally, there was design funding for the Kittredge School on the warrant. It's not still there because we are working with MSBA, and their process is just a little bit slower than our process.
Much slower than I expected.
That's okay. And what's nice about it, though, in some ways, is that that money was already appropriated and put in the capital stabilization account. So, we're collecting interest on it, and I'd like to keep it there and get that interest until we need it. So, you'll see that moved out a little bit, but there's a lot of really exciting projects in the capital improvement plan this year.
I forgot my favorite from Melissa.
What is it?
The Fields.
The Fields. Well, it's its own article, I think.
It is, yeah.
So, it makes it hard.
We'll get to that one.
I like that. You're right.
In terms of--
I favor it, too.
In terms of capital expenditure on the school side, anything particularly dear?
Coming forward, I mean, I think by the time this budget's invoked, the middle school will be close to completion, right? So, that's obviously the first, foremost thing we need to make sure that--
I heard a representation at a recent meeting that the, that building addition is on time and on budget. Do you have confidence in that representation?
I absolutely have confidence in that.
Excellent.
Yes. It's on time. It's on budget. Every time you drive by, it pops up another, another, you know, floor comes up or a wall.
Yeah, they're putting the brick on.
Yeah. It's just, it's proceeding--
Got door frames.
It's proceeding really well and remarkably fast, in my opinion. So, that's the top, top capital investment. But I know that we've had a lot of issues with heating, ventilation, air conditioning. So, there's some, probably some new purchases going on there.
We've got the track at the high school.
Oh, I'm sorry. And yes, we have the, well, it became accelerated, right? We were planning to do that anyway, but now they're, now we're going to, that's in this year's, in the going-forward budget, which is important.
Because of the damage from the flood.
Donovan, you and your colleagues have made a judgment that we can afford it.
We have, yeah.
Can we afford it?
We can, yes. The town manager has done a wonderful job in planning out how we're going to bring capital projects on over the next, I'd like to say, four or five years, but it is going to take us a little bit longer, but that's okay because, as we're happy at the Finance Committee, it's going to affect everybody's taxes in the least possible way, the most manageable way. So, to be able to get all of the capital projects done that we've wanted and dearly needed and do it in a little bit longer of a timeframe than we want, but to keep it as least impactful on, you know, the taxpayers of the town is something that the Finance Committee's been very impressed by the town manager, the Select Board, and the schools to be able to do. So, we're proud to recommend passage on the capital plan.
So, a principal project that'll be on the warrant is in two different warrant articles. One is the RecPlex itself, and then a contribution for that RecPlex through the community preservation. Who wants to give us an update on the RecPlex article and itself?
There were a couple people who were real excited about it.
Were very excited about it, so--
You got a couple choices. So, I'll start by saying that, you know, having been involved in youth sports here and high school sports now for 24 years, there's nothing needed more severely than that project, and it's--
And the community's already addressed--
Yeah.
--and heard about the RecPlex, but at this moment in time, there was an expectation that that would be utilized and built right now, and it has not been.
It has not, and has created a lot of work for a lot of people, both in the town government, you know, the town employees that have had to deal with that, as well as the volunteers across all of the youth sports organizations, school people, to try to make it work. And I will say, folks have been fabulous about that, the cooperation between the Fields Committee, you know, the high school athletic department, and everyone at Town Hall is really making it possible for us to survive, but we are barely getting by.
So, maybe a primer for one of you. What is the RecPlex?
So, the RecPlex is the fields between Atkinson, ABECC, and the middle school, and it is--
The old Hayes Stadium.
The old Hayes Stadium, yes.
For we old Tommies.
Yes.
And everything around it.
And everything around it. And we have a beautiful plan to put into multipurpose fields that'll have soccer, baseball across, and walking paths, and a playground, and an amphitheater, and bocce courts, and basketball courts. So, a real place for the community to come together and use, and I think it really will be impactful to our entire community and especially youth sports that are looking for some fields-based.
Please.
The real question is, will they have pickleball courts?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm told it's the fastest-growing sport in the world, so--
It is. They'll also be at McAvoy once we start construction.
Well, and softball, too.
And softball, yes. And softball, nice, yes.
And talk to me, Melissa, please, about the timeline and the expense. It's more expensive than anticipated right now.
It is. So, if you remember correctly, this actually was voted before I even worked here. So, we're talking about 2018, right? And then, unfortunately--
So, it was voted more than 10 years ago when it first drew a dust?
No. 10 years ago, I was in high school, though. Just playing. I wasn't.
Exactly.
But if you think about it, right, that was, it feels like, a lifetime ago, right? A lot has happened since 2018, unfortunately. And what happened is that we actually went through three separate lawsuits, and we are at the point in the final lawsuit where we feel ready and comfortable to move forward at risk. And so, we are ready to pull permits as soon as we have funding available. And that funding is really where we kind of lie right now and why we're at Town Meeting. So, when we started this project in 2018, the project was budgeted $8.7 million. We appropriated about $7.5, and a million dollars was supposed to be raised by boosters. I'm going to share, it is very hard to raise money when you have litigation going on. People do not want to run and give any money. And as we've gone through the years, we've seen, really, and you see it at home, extreme inflation. I did the math today. The project actually went up 13.5% each year, which is a lot of money.
Each year.
Each year.
Right, compounded.
Yep. Every year. So, we are at about $18.7 million. I want to stress, the project has not changed at all. I've heard that, if people ask me, it's not bigger than it was. It's exactly the same project. It's just unfortunately cost more money today.
And it will be paid for on a bonding basis?
Yes. So, CPC.
And there are the two separate sources, so share with us, please.
I will. I'd be happy to. We have two bonds. One is through CPC. It's about $7 million, and they're actually going to bond over a 10-year period because they want to be able to spread it out enough that they can continue to do other important projects that might come up, but they don't want to impact CPC for a really long period of time, and I'm very supportive of that. And then, we have an additional approximately $5 million. Actually, it's $3.8 million that is being bonded from the town. And we are actually using debt that we have reserved in the budget. So, as debt has fallen off the last few years, we have basically saved it and used it for one-time capital items. We're actually doing it this year to pay for $1 million of the RecPlex, but we're using some of that to be able to take this bond. It's about a payment of $250,000 a year with no impact to taxpayers at home. And interestingly, the way that this bond falls off, it falls off in line with Facilities Master Plan 2. So, it doesn't impact our ability to do Facilities Master Plan 2 at all.
So, I'd just like to say, from a Finance Committee perspective, the CPC bonding part of this is new to North Andover, but that shouldn't concern people. It's not new to the process. Across the Commonwealth, towns, cities, and towns have used this method to fund big, large-scale projects within their town using CPC funds. And the CPC chair came in. We've spoken to the town manager and Finance many, many times, and the Finance Committee felt very, very comfortable with this methodology moving forward, considering the large expense as it's compounded 13% over the years.
So, let's talk about community preservation. That will be a separate article, although we'll discuss probably in concert with Article 20, as I recollect, about the RecPlex. They have other projects and initiatives. Perhaps one of you could share with us what they might be?
We have a lot of good ones, but one of them being the stables at the Stevens Estate, right? There's so many buildings on the property, but--
We have horses at the Stevens Estate?
We used to, I think. We used to. So, and actually, it's important to me, as a structural engineer, we're going to stabilize that building and make sure that we can preserve that building.
So, the stables need to be stabilized?
Stabilized, yes. So, that will stabilize that, and then we can move forward with however they want to use that building and what improvements need to be--
And who gets to make the judgment about how that building might be used?
So, we work with Fireside Catering, who's managing that building.
So, the manager of the enterprise right now?
Right.
Okay.
So, we'll work with them.
Other initiatives in--
We have the access to the lake. That's been an ongoing CPC project. They went through design and, for three years now, I believe, they've gone through that, and now they are moving forward with construction. So, that access where the boat ramp is for kayaks and canoes.
And this is on which side of Grape Pond Road?
It's on the Butcher Boy side.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that's another good project, and--
My favorite, Stage of the Common.
The stage. That's right. Yes.
Because?
Because the stage of the common currently is not handicap accessible, and if you've been on it lately, it's not the most stable either. So, we're getting a beautiful new stage. We're actually working currently with the Historic District Committee to talk about what their expectations will be, and we're really looking forward to rolling that out for community--
Now, that's pretty small dollars. I think it's $210,000 or thereabouts, but it has an impact for a large portion of our community in terms of all the festival work and concerts and the like that happen there. It's a principal gathering point.
Absolutely.
And where our first Town Meetings were actually held, as a matter of fact. So, let's talk about one other item, and that is a zoning article, MBTA. We're not Milton. We don't have a stop in our community. Why do we have an MBTA obligation, according to the governor?
Sure. So, there is legislation called the MBTA Act, and basically, it names the communities that are MBTA communities. This was even long before this legislation came to be. Those communities pay a fee to the Commonwealth based on where they are located, whether they have bus service or how close they are to a train. And so, that's why we technically are an MBTA community.
Because of our proximity--
Proximity.
--to a train.
So, we, yeah. So, when the--
In Andover.
Exactly.
In Andover, thank you.
So, the new legislation that came out, originally, we actually were considered an MBTA community, and our number of units that we were going to be required to build was actually much higher. And we petitioned the state to become an adjacent community, and we did, we did get that. And so, that actually lowered the number of units that we are being required to zone.
What's that metric?
So, we have to zone for 1,191 units, 50 acres.
So, the zoning that's being requested has suggested two areas. Perhaps you might share with us what those areas are?
So, we have two areas, one being where 1600 Osgood is, and that actually is already really zoned for the multifamily by right. So, that was one area that the Planning Board really focused on, and the other one would be Market Basket on 114.
So, let's talk about this. Should we expect that there'll be 500 units of housing at a Market Basket site in 114?
No. I think that's--
Some people will interpret the request that way, and I think it's important.
I think that's really important. This is a zoning change, not a production requirement.
So, the zoning change is done for a compliance obligation?
Yes.
And only a compliance obligation? What about those who believe that there is a need for additional housing in our community, but this doesn't materially address that?
It doesn't, and I think that's difficult for a lot of people, that this isn't requiring production because we all know that rents are high and housing prices, prices are high, and we all need to participate and do our part to build affordable housing. This particular one is so that we comply with the state and we don't lose our grants and our funding from the state.
And what grants are at risk if we didn't have this zoning that does not require specific production?
Sure. So, it hasn't been 100% clear yet. I will say, they have told us Mass Works. In the last five years, we have received $6.1 million in Mass Work funding, the sewer project on 125, the work we did last year and this year on Grape Pond Road, all funded by Mass Works. We would no longer be a Housing Choice community, which means we would lose points towards other grants. other grants. And, you know, I think we're all kind of watching to see what's going to happen to some of these other communities that have chosen to be noncompliant and what other funding mechanisms may be taken away.
So is it fair to characterize this as a placeholder while we assess that which might happen in the future and what our obligation is to all of our citizens and to the Commonwealth at large at a later time?
Absolutely. Yes, and I think, you know, we want to be in compliance. It's really important for us to be in compliance. That doesn't mean that we can't make adjustments to this plan later if need be, right? It's been very much stressed by the state. This is not a production plan, it's a zoning plan. We're not required to build the housing, we're required to zone for it. That being said, I do want to just point out that last year at town meeting, we did, was that last year? It was only last year, inclusionary zoning. And that inclusionary zoning is included in this bylaw as well. But it's also something that's really helping us to continue to invest in our affordable housing stock.
So the acting superintendent is going to have a heart attack. There won't be 300 new students in schools next year. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm delighted to clear that up. And it's a misimpression that some people might have as well. Are there any other issues that any of you wish to talk about in terms of what's going on at town meeting? I have one, but I'll see if you come up with it.
So I would just, I would just like to encourage folks to come out to town meetings. So that's not necessarily-
You're stealing my, you're stealing my valedictory here, so go right ahead.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Moderator. No, listen, I know who appoints my committee, so if you'd like to, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
No, I think that this town meeting is an important one. And I think there's still some work to get done before we get to town meeting. So I would just encourage taxpayers, citizens, residents to keep watching the town website, keep watching North Andover CAM, and to make sure that you come out to town meeting because it's important to participate and have your voice heard.
Anybody else?
The obvious things we're working on, want the public to be aware, so they should be there for that purpose, understand what our plans are and how we're going to address things.
As moderator, I always enjoy citizens' petitions. They are entertaining, they're a nice baseline in terms of what citizens are thinking about. There's one that's intriguing to me that I know precious little about, and that's about historic barns. Can somebody share with me?
Yeah. So we had a citizen petition come before us. It will be a zoning change and it's for the Old Center District. And it's for the barns, these old, they have to be over 50 years old. The large barns, some of them are not being used to their potential. And it allows residents to rent the space for non-impactful, not big production, just if somebody wants to do artwork, art or pottery or, you can't know from the outside that this is happening. Nothing on the outside of the building changes, but it allows them to rent that space out and maybe earn some money to keep those buildings.
It's always good to learn what people's interests and motivations are. I think we're essentially done here. Thank you for the prelude.
Again, I apologize, Mr. Moderator.
No, no, no apologies necessary. It truly is our town meeting. This will be our 377th annual town meeting in the town of North Andover. And it is the longest-standing participatory democracy in the world on this globe. And you, as legislators, change hats from citizen to legislator and get to make the judgments. Every vote counts. I invite you to please come to town meeting, make your voice heard, have an influence on your government, have an influence on the judgments that will be made on Tuesday, May 14th at 6:30 p.m. We will start again on time. And in that two- to four-hour period that we're together, you will make consequential judgments and they will be generational, generational in impact. And I appreciate these good people and all of you for the privilege of conducting town meeting and, most importantly, for the opportunity to work together and solve both the problems and the interests and fulfill the mission of our community, that real-world community. And we are that. Thank you, my fellow colleagues and neighbors.
Thank you.
My delight.